I'd like to call the water. This meeting of the Quincy City Council Finance Committee. With the clerk of committees, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico, Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Chairman Phelan.
Present.
Seven members of the quorum.
Okay. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to read into the record the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person can make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. Okay. We're dealing with one order before the City Council Finance. It's 20-022-028, an appropriation for $16,400,000 Pine Hill Cemetery Expansion and Reservation. At this point, we've already had a meeting and we had several questions that came up during that meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Dave Murphy to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I appreciate this opportunity to come back before you for this very important project. A lot has happened since we last presented back on April 4th. As the chairman mentioned, we did have an opportunity to submit a packet to the Finance Committee with answers to many of the questions that came up at that meeting and subsequently submitted, I think through Ms. Manning, into Mr. Walker, and hopefully that those responses were helpful in following up on some of those questions. Equally important, since that time, we've had a bid opening. On April 15th, we were able to open the bids for the projects. So our estimates on April 4th are actually now costs that we can present to the council for your consideration. We have a much clearer picture tonight of what this project is going to look like based on those costs than we did on April 4th. The good news is that we've had a pretty competitively bid project. We had a lot of reputable companies that bid. We had a number turnout for the pre-bid conference, and we received four bids for the project. The bad news is, though we expected it, that inflation is going to take its toll on this project. And what we're finding is the bidders are not just responding to current inflation, but they have a responsibility to bid with projected inflation as well, too. So our low bidder was C. Norton. C. Norton, a very reputable company that's done business with the city in the past. Their bid was for $14.685 million. They were a million and a half less than the next lowest bidder and $10 million less than our highest bidder, which gives you a sense of kind of volatility in the market. It should also be noted that this bid did not include building construction. The Welcome Center committal structure were not included in the Norton bid, and you'll hear later about the committal structure becoming part of our value engineering process. Our goal for this project, as we stated on April 4th, was not only to create valuable interment space for Quincy residents that could last the next two decades, but also to make it a self-funded project with revenues generated from the sale of lots and other associated fees. In order to remain self-funded, we set off on a pretty robust value engineering process to stay within our budget. Our goal was to have the budget drive the project and not have the project drive the budget. So we went back to the drawing board and valued engineered our way back into the budget established by MUNIFI based on the revenue projections. As you may recall, they projected a $24.1 million revenue projection for the new interment spaces and associated fees and charges, and our project and borrowing costs will remain approximately $500,000 below that figure. We believe that they were appropriately conservative with that revenue picture, and we believe that delta of $500,000 will be a minimum surplus. Further, I know one of the councils raised the issue of the cemetery board of managers responding and adjusting to inflation. The Board of Managers does reserve the right to review and increase the fee structure to keep pace with inflation, and I would anticipate the Board of Managers reviewing their fee structure again this year in light of the spike inflation and the subsequent impacts on the expansion costs that we see in our bidding process. In summary, we have approximately 12 months of immediate need available space at Pine Hill. We're averaging close to almost 30 funerals, 30 burials a month, and that number has increased since the pandemic. We are projected to add over 13,000 interment spaces with this project, and that should alleviate the immediate pressure for the next 20 years. We're aiming to provide this valuable service to our residents, most importantly, our seniors, but what's critically important is that we also enhance the dignity of the folks that are already interred at Pine Hill Cemetery, and we're endeavoring to do all of this as a self-funded project. In order to further explain how we have worked to keep this project on budget, I would like to turn it over to Joe Shea from our project team to highlight some of the main value engineering steps that we've taken to date.
Thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I'm Joseph Shea. I'm with Granite City Partners here in the city. I'm part of the design team for the Pine Hills Expansion and Enhancement Project. I had the fortune of working with Woodland and Curran originally when this project kicked off, and I've been able to stay with the project through its various phases. Scott Salvucci, the project manager from Woodland and Curran, couldn't be here tonight, so I'm happy to do my best to fill his shoes and speak to the project. The commissioner was 100% on in that we've accomplished a lot in the last month, and we've accomplished all of that under the umbrella of keeping this initiative a self-funded project, staying within the conservatively calculated model of selling all of the new burial plots and cremation niches will generate the revenue to cover the cost of the project. The commissioner was also accurate in that when we opened bids on April 15th, although we were happy to have reputable firms, very capable firms, firms that have had successful projects in Quincy, the costs did exceed the budget estimates that we had prepared. So we immediately entered into a value engineering exercise to ensure that we maintain the self-funded project status. The 28-page packet that was submitted to the council for review on April 21st, I apologize, had a lot of spreadsheets. I was very comfortable with that package because of the charts, graphs, and numbers, but I do acknowledge it was a very dense document to get through. I've done my best to highlight for you tonight some of the value engineering components that are within that package that have brought us to a point where we are here to continue to request $16.4 million for a project that adds a little over 13,000 burial locations and enhances the cemetery in a manner that is appropriate, is dignified, modernizes the cemetery, and really sets the city up for the next 50 years, although I believe you'll sell it out before then, but sets the city up for the future of Pine Hill Cemetery. A number of the highlights in your package regarding the value engineering exercise. The primary one is that the original project had anticipated two new buildings, a welcome structure and a committal structure. The reality of the cost structure today, the reality of inflation and escalation, is that the tough decision to eliminate the committal structure has been made. With the elimination of that structure, there is definitely a cascading effect. We've eliminated significant electrical work. We've eliminated a septic system. We've been able to eliminate more than just the building component cost to ensure that we stay within $16.4 million. But the package you have speaks to a number of the items that are related to the removal of the committal structure. We also replaced vertical granite curbing with asphalt berms. At our previous presentation, there was a number of questions and discussions about vertical granite curbing. Although beautiful and dignified, it is a cost factor. Vertical granite curbing has remained within the project at the handicap ramps, at catch basins, and at areas that we know the water will wash out. It is a hill, Pine Hill. The water runs down, so the curbing is more of a stormwater treatment, stormwater management element. But all except for 2,200 feet of curbing has been removed from the project and replaced with an asphalt berm. The landscaping plan has been reduced from about 1,200 pieces, trees, bushes, shrubbery, down to 400 pieces with a focus on screening the cemetery, screening the zones within the cemetery, but there's a notable reduction in your package, including incremental unit prices for the landscaping pieces. We've also modified the way that we're going to handle paving the roadways. The existing roadways at Pine Hill, for those who've driven it, need to be repaired. This project was going to mill and overlay, meaning I'm going to get a little technical, but scoop up six inches of that roadway, grind it up, replace it, compact it, and pave over the top. We've now proposed a modified approach to repairing those roadways. You will still get new durable roadways, but we will not be digging up the six inches and milling and overlay. We will compact and repave those roadways. Another element in the value engineering exercise in your packet is we have modified the approach to some of the retaining walls. We had three different types of retaining walls on the projects, and we have modified those walls to become precast concrete blocks in some sections. We find that the labor savings on installing precast blocks allowed the contractor to move much more expeditiously, and at the end of the day, saves time and therefore money. We do have some sections where we will still be putting in boulder walls because we are flush with rock at the Pine Hill Cemetery. We want to reuse that stone as much as possible rather than pay to ship it off-site. And then in many of the hardscape areas, including the pergola area, we have changed from what were granite pavers to a stamped concrete. It's a different finish in the area. It saves a significant amount of money. In the process, although granite pavers are beautiful, they are costly, and our strident approach to trying to maintain $16.4 million, we had to move away from the pavers. Through the value engineering exercise, we had identified 19 opportunities for savings. We went through, we balanced them all. We ended up eliminating some because they really were not a meaningful savings. Others that we, as an engineering team, had thought would be savings when we sat down with the apparent low-bid contractor, we realized their means and methods would make it not a savings. And the list in your package on page six is the list of recommended savings that reduces the project bid amount by $2.54 million. Let me actually get to that. Thus delivering a project bid total for award of $13.9 million. So through this process, and I'm going to back up just for the at-home viewer and people watching, through this process, the cemetery expansion exists of two components. One is the expansion itself. It's shown here in green, which is the addition of 13,220 locations for burials, both burial plots and cremation niches. And then enhancements to the cemetery in a number of locations, they're shown here in blue. The value engineering activity really focused on the enhancements and the means and methods of creating the expansion. Although we have reduced the project price significantly by $2.5 million, we have not reduced the number of plots and cremation niches that can be sold, so we did not impact our financial model in terms of the revenue that we've forecasted generating. This slide's a little tough to read as I look at it up here on the screen, and I apologize, but these are the locations for the eliminated committal structure, the stamped concrete, the modifications to paving that's in your package. And of the items that we chose not to reduce and we wish to preserve, we are absolutely preserving all of the interment locations. We are also preserving the veterans' sections enhancement and artwork for our sixth armed forces. We are still preserving roadway improvements. I don't wish anybody to believe that the existing roadways are adequate. They are not. We are modifying our approach to resurfacing those roadways. We are maintaining the ADA compliant ramps, drainage, and catch basins. We are maintaining 400 pieces of landscaping for screening and beautification. We are maintaining the Welcome Center building, which still needs to be bid, and we are maintaining the pergola and bench section at a gathering area. They will just be on stamped concrete and not on granite pavers. So again, in your presentation packet and in your slideshow tonight, it's slide 10. This is the breakdown that we are proposing for the $16.4 million. In round numbers, the expansion component, which has been bid and would need also construction administration, is $14.7 million. And the Welcome Center building, which is still to be bid, plus the associated architectural oversight, would be about $1.2 million. That would leave an additional project contingency of $520,000. We had a great discussion at the last meeting about is there enough contingency? These are difficult times to forecast now that we have hard bids in hand. We've eliminated some of the risk and some of the contingencies we had forecasted as engineers. However, we are still requesting $520,000 within the overall $16.4 million appropriation for any potential unforeseen subsurface issues or any other price escalation challenges. In summary, following the April 4th meeting, there's the package that was distributed on April 21st. There were seven pages of written responses to the councilors' questions. There were detailed cost breakdowns. There were a number of attachments. Again, some of them got quite dense with engineering, and I apologize. We wanted to make sure we did provide as much detail as we could. And then there was questions about the Welcome Center, and included in that package were the layouts of the Welcome Center and an architectural rendering. Just to be clear, the committal structure has been removed, but the Welcome Center is being proposed to stay. The Welcome Center would be added at the Willard Street Gate. So I know you're all very familiar with the cemetery. When you arrive at the Willard Street Gate, you arrive on the backside of a maintenance garage at this moment. This project is proposing to create the structure you see now and the structure in your package, which would be a meeting room for grieving families when they come in to discuss their arrangements. It will be adjacent to the existing garage, but it will really actually work in harmony with some of the modifications and landscape improvements, such that it's a more welcoming location on Willard Street as opposed to what was once the back door and became the front door. So the Welcome Center, we can talk about, but we will be prepared to bid out the Welcome Center in the coming months. So with that, I would like to thank you and ask if we can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. At this time, I'm going to open it up for councilors for questions and comments. I'd like to have everyone have a chance to speak first, and then we'll also come back for a second round if we need to. Counselor Mahoney.
I never like to go first, believe it or not. So I have a lot of questions, so I know I'll probably be shut off at some point. So I guess I'd like to start, Mr. Murphy, if we could. You know, in 2020 or 2021, I think it was 2020 when you first came on, you had $750,000 reported in the paper that you had said that in the paper that we were going to have 4,000 graves created from that. And then I know the answer here, and the reason why I'm starting there is because, you know, that was something that was released from the administration, like many things, press releases that are released from the administration with anticipations of something, and something very different happened there, and a cost was associated with it. So could we start there? I mean, it was projected that there was going to be 4,000, and it came back as 510. And then the site work project was about, which was $750,000, came in at around $1,015. So could we start with that? Because that's quite a discrepancy of what we thought we were going to get, and we didn't get that reported. And second to that, before we go there, your number is $1,015, and my number's closer to, let me just check here, it's closer to about $1,007,000 that's been spent, and that is the perpetual account. There was $495,000 that was transferred over to the capital account that was paid to Woodland and Curran, and then there was another in the premium on bond sale, which I'm not sure if anybody in the council knows what we're playing. That's a whole other can of worms. But there was $1,098,735,000 that have been spent and another $88,034,000 that has encumbered before we get to the $16.4 million. So I think we need to back up and figure out what Phase 1 was, and then if we could, because I'm not really going to be prepared to vote on this tonight because there's a lot of money spent on this project to clear the land and to do a lot of things that were ahead of this project on top of the $16.4 million. So if we could just start from there, and if, because that's actually a cost that should be, you know, transparent to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. In the newspaper, you reported 4,000. That's 3,500 less, and in these plans, we're saying we don't want to lose, you know, we're going to have 13,000 plus. And my concern is it's a big price tag for 13,000, and it could potentially run into problems, too. Unforeseen problems, I'm sure. So I just, I'm concerned about that. So if we could start there.
Sure, I'll do my best. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't seen the article that you're referencing. My best guess is there's a conflation.
You're quoted in it, so I just want to make sure you understand.
That's fine. I haven't seen the specific article, but my guess is there's a conflation in the report about the different phases. So 4,000 will be the overall goal for the start of the project versus the cost of that first phase to open up those, the roadway up there, plus the original graves we put in to start the project.
So the difference there, too, as you said, you spent, so one of the questions when I was asking that is that what's the total cost to date spent on Pine Hill, Phase 1, Phase 2, anything spent since 2020 on Pine Hill Cemetery before we get into the $16.4 million? And your number is $1,015, and my number is, and it's coming from UNIS, it's coming from the city, it's not a made-up number, is closer to $1,007,000. So there's a 650, I mean, I've been told by Mr. Mason many times that a half a million dollars isn't a lot of money, but it's a lot of money. So it's questionable, so.
So I don't know if you want to answer that, I will, but, you know, I think there are two different pieces to this. One is the first phase of the project cost, I think was the question that was asked, or at least the one that we answered.
750, yeah.
From that point forward, we've been doing some substantial work to get to this point as well, too. So if there are additional costs beyond the $1,015, I can't speak specifically, but my guess is the work that we've been doing since then has a price tag.
So it's preliminary work that's being done in a project that we're bidding, that if we want to be transparent about, we're bonding something out, the total cost of the project is. If I was to build a house and I do preliminary work, I'm going to keep track of how much I've already invested into the house, because if I go to sell it, I'm going to want to know how, what's my break even on something? So in this city, we would like to know what our break even is, and that $1,005,000 or $1,007,000 is an important number because we're investing in that property up there. And I'm not by any means suggesting, and I want to make this very clear, that it's not something that we need to do. It's really in terrible shape up there. It's an embarrassing shape. It doesn't look like it's ever been raped. It doesn't look like there's any care that's given up there. I'm not sure if there's any time that's provided up there. I've gone up there and I've looked at it. It's a very sad situation that's happening at Pine Hill Cemetery. Does that mean, you know, I don't want the roads to be improved? No. Does that mean I don't want to see more opportunities for the city of Quincy to be able to have their loved ones buried there? Absolutely not. I'm in a situation, in a family situation right now, that one of my parents have told me that Pine Hill is someplace that they would like to be because they would like to be in Quincy. So at the same time, so wouldn't that mean I'd come in here tonight and say, yes, make it as beautiful as you possibly can? But the city of Quincy cannot afford to just be spending $16.4 million when we have, you know, a million projects that this administration wants to do, and this is just one. There's easily, if you add them all up, there's easily 200 million more coming our way at some point. So there's a point where we can't do them all. And the question here is, we've already spent that much money, and we're asking for $16.4 million. And you valued engineered, it's interesting, you valued engineered a project, and you're coming in with the exact same number that's been bid. That's a strange thing that's happened. Let me just go to something else that's in the package because I know other people are going to want to speak. We added in the Welcome Center. I mean, I could go, I can go through a million things, but the Welcome Center is being, the construction cost is $1,100,000, correct?
Correct.
And then what's the construction administration and resident project representative? Is that the new person that would be working there? What does that represent?
I'm happy to jump into that one. The Welcome Center building cost, construction cost is actually nine, the estimate is $912,000. Then contingencies have been added on for escalation, construction, and design. That brings the total to $1.1 million for the building. And then the architect's fees for construction phase oversight, pardon me for flipping pages, is $95,000 according to page seven of your packet or slide 10 tonight. So the building components would be $1.195,000.
What's the 95,000, is that the architect? Is that what you said?
That's the architect, yes.
Okay. So, and I know that, you know, it looks like it's going to be granite. It looks like you're going to have coins built out on the side, which is an architectural detail. You're going to have lentils that are over the windows. It's a single story. I want the people at home to understand, this is a single story, right? Basement, is there a basement in it?
There is no basement in the Welcome Center.
No basement, and it's two offices and a bathroom, and in the bathroom, it's just a sink and a toilet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Just want to make sure that nothing major fancy in here. What's the interior going to be? Is it going to be gold? What's in the interior of this? Because $912,000 for a 578-square-foot building averages out to $1,577 per square foot. That seems astronomical to me. And I, you know, I know, I can't afford to, you don't have, this isn't a luxury house? And I looked it up. Like, you want to build a luxury house? You're not coming in at $1,577, maybe in New York you are, but not here in Quincy. So this isn't a home. Nobody's going to be living there. It's two offices, which will probably be two people that will potentially work there in the future. I don't know. But it's also attached. What's even more disturbing is it's attached to a garage, and there's no place in here that you're showing me the garage that's going to be fixed. Is that true?
It is not attached to the garage, it's next to the garage.
Stash, pardon me?
It is not attached to the garage. The Welcome Center is next to the garage.
Next to the garage. So currently, the garage right now has a leaky roof with a Home Depot, I don't know if you can catch this, like a Home Depot box on top of it. It's been, there's stuff, it's just awful. That should be torn down. It looks terrible. But you're going to put a Welcome Center that's going to cost us $1,577 per square foot to build next to something that has basically a bucket on top of it to keep it from leaking. I mean, and we're spending $16.4 million on a project, and we're not attaching, we're not doing anything to that building, which is an eyesore. So that was a shock to me that in this plan, you're not even addressing something that's the ugliest thing I've ever seen. I assumed that was going to be taken down. I hope that other building that's in Pine Hill that's currently just, I think they were bathrooms. I don't know who's living in them, but there's something inside of those things. The doors are open currently. It's a danger, but I mean, that's coming down, I hope. I have no idea, but this isn't coming down. So this is problematic in your plan. And yes, the roads are terrible, but so is that building, but $912,000 for two offices and a bathroom, I think we can value engineer that out, too, because that needs to be much less. This is not a house. It's not a home. It's nothing. It's a Welcome Center, and it should be welcoming, but it, you know, that's a lot of money. And I think you could agree with me. $1,577 per square foot, that's a lot of money for what you're asking. And the taxpayers of the city of Quincy are well aware of that. This project is overpriced. You valued engineered out $2 million, and you came in at the same price? That's just not acceptable. It really is. It's just not realistic. I understand that we're in a situation where the economy is going to be challenging, but let's talk about that for a second. So looking at the, looking at our bonds, basically, that's the S&amp;P reporting in the city of Quincy, the budget book that we just got, the S&amp;P reported, the credit The S and P reported, the crediting of the city of Quincy clearly noted that now with the debit, with the pension obligation bond, that we have considerable debt. That's no surprise to anybody. We have considerable debt. This project, when brought to us, Mr. Mason told us that it would bring us to 7%. We have seven and a half. That's our guidelines that we want to stay within. But again, I'm going to go back, and I'm going to suggest that we have north of at least 100 million, if not 200 million dollars worth of projects that are being projected out there to come back into here. I can list them off if we want to, but people are well aware of them. And many of them are also overpriced, but this one is as well. I just want to go back to one other thing. The fountain, which is beautiful, it's natural. It has a pump. You spent 25,000 on that already as well. $240,000 is what I think it said in the budget for this, 240,000. Maybe it's the moving of the rocks, I'm not sure. But these things are very expensive, and I don't think it's necessary. I, I think what people are looking for is for our cemeteries to be maintained, the roads to be maintained, for things to look nice even, cleaned up. But we don't have to spend 16.4 million dollars to do that. And we want more places for people to be able to be interned. But even if we were to go with this project at 16.4 million dollars, that would pay the debt, as we like to say, a no brainer. At the end of that 10 years, is it 10 years or 20 years we think it will last? How do we keep up the maintenance? Because you're just paying off the bond. You're not actually thinking about how we're going to be able to take care of it. One other thing, we mentioned for flooding situations, the burn, the asphalt berms. I spent a lot of time going to, it's sad that I'm doing this, but, but they are beautiful. Cemeteries are beautiful. Almost every cemetery that I went to, that are, they're arboretums really, arboretums. But we are talking about asphalt berms. But when I went to those arboretums, they don't have, they don't have granite. They don't have asphalt berms. They don't have granite pillars where their spigots are. They have, they're low to the ground. And in Wall, in, in Mount Wallaston, you have beautiful granite spigots. You have pavers underneath those spigots. And then you have oil drums that look like junk that are sitting on top of the pavers that have weeds all over them. So I guess I just want to make sure that when we're investing in these things, that we're maintaining them. But we don't need the asphalt berms either, because when you plow those berms, those berms are going to get destroyed. And they do plow cemeteries. So I don't think we did a good job value engineering. I think we can do much better. But I'm very concerned, because this is extremely expensive. And I think we should be doing it in phases, not, not just taking advantage of the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, because we are going into uncertain times, and the interest rates are going up, and S and P is telling us to be careful. But don't worry, we have excess levy. So guess who we can go back to if we get into trouble? The taxpayers. So let's be careful about what we don't. I do believe the city of Quincy deserves to have something, but I think we might be still looking at something that's just a little bit astronomical. $1,577 per square foot for a welcome center. I would want to be able to host parties in there.
I will, through you, Mr. Chairman, happily speak to the, the engineering and existing building components, and then defer on maintenance and finance to the other presenters. To, to cover, hopefully I captured all of the items, but to hit on a few. The, the existing office building, which is near the Chikatobit Gate, is being demolished and removed. That 1940s grade building is, it's time to go.
Yep.
That may be why it was open, but that, that has been vacated, and its operations have been moved into a trailer already.
Yeah, I think maybe when they vacated, they never went back up to that cemetery to mow the lawn even.
The garage roof component, that's, that is information to me, so I would have to look into that.
So did Woodward and Curran go up and look at the projects that they were doing?
Uh, yes, oh, absolutely.
If it's news to you, I know that you're just subbing in here, but it's just, it, I don't know how anybody that could be hired to do this project could honestly come before this council with this budget and not address that, including the commissioner, because it's a disgrace. I encourage everybody in the city of Quincy to take a stop by the highway and go into Pine Hill Cemetery and take a look at what's going to stay.
I believe we would encourage the same. Please look at the cemetery and look at its opportunity.
I mean, it's amazing how much work that's been done. The road has been cleared, the boulders are moved. There's lots of things prepared. That's probably easily the million seven that's been spent.
The phase one, yes.
No, it wasn't phase one. I think that might have been phase two, because there's phase two in this project that of the million seven. So again, I'll let you continue, but I do think.
I'll let you speak to maintenance.
That should have been taken into consideration. You're going to tow 16.4 million dollars and leave that, that eyesore? That's, that's not in your package. Is that going to be phase 16?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I think if there are issues with the roof of the existing garage, the purpose of the welcome center being located where it is to do exactly what you're suggesting, Councilor, and that is that, you know, we don't think that the back end of the garage is a very welcome entrance to the Willow Street Gate, which is now, as Mr. Shea said, the front door. So the purpose of that welcome center is exactly that. We agree with you, that the, the front entrance on Willow Street needs to be improved. We have a series of enhancements in this plan to do exactly that.
But you're going to leave the eyesore there. So basically, you're going to spend 16.4 million dollars and leave a building that has a Home Depot bucket on the top that's keeping it from being leaked into. And it's not part of your plan, nor did you realize it was there.
We, we do regular maintenance and repairs on a regular basis. We don't need to do that, a simple repair to a roof.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just suggesting there's some big flaws in this project if this isn't part of it.
Thank you.
For 16.4 million dollars. How about the answer, how about the answer to the, the $1,577 per square foot for that building?
I asked the same question you did. I said the same exact thing. I, I want to know why a building that is a very modest building in its design has costs that are that high, and that we don't do anything beyond what we should be doing for a basic welcome center for when people to come in and buy a lot from our cemetery staff. We don't need anything fancy in that building. I, I asked the same question. I agree with you, and that's what we're going to endeavor to do.
Let me ask you, Mr. Commissioner, if you agree with me, why would you not then say, please, go back and bring me something else? Because we cannot ask the taxpayers of the city of Quincy to pay that much money for a welcome center. It's just, it's, this project is overpriced in so many ways, in grandiose ways, that is just beyond the expectations of anybody being able to afford. People want to be able to afford to live here in the city of Quincy, and they would like to also be able to stay here when they get buried. But what we're really doing is forcing people out with these projects that are overpriced, and just, they're just over the top. And we're not getting the things back that we expect that we're supposed to be getting back. And it's, you know, the other question is how, you know, when we do actually start taking the interims, if this is to pass tonight, if we were to be able to pass this, and we were starting to collect those monies, how do we ensure that that money is going to pay off the bonds? And the second question I have to that is, if the bonds are actually, there's money left over, and they go into this, this premium, premium bonds account, how do we assure that that money is being spent on proper projects? Because I think some of these bonds are over, these projects are ballooned in a way so that they can have extra money to be able to funnel back into something else.
Okay, Councilor, I'm going to let those questions be answered, and I'd like to also go to other.
No, I appreciate that. I really do appreciate your time.
Okay.
Through you, Chairman, thank you. To address the premium. Premium is not generated by a, say you have a $20 million bond, and you spend 15 million. 5 million does not go in there. Bond premium is the product of a coupon rate differentiating from the market rate. And it's a tool used by every public entity in the country. So coupon rate is the amount of interest dated on the bond. The market rate is what the market decides that day. The variation between those two, between the par value, market value, you subtract those numbers together, and you get the premium. So it's not from undersale. In the event that, say, this 16.4 million dollar bond ends up being related to a project that costs 16 million, the remaining $400,000 would simply become unauthorized unbonded debt. If we work very closely with our bond council and financial advisors, so that can't be pulled for anything besides Pine Hill improvement. To speak upon what would financially secure the future maintenance of the facility, what's important to remember is that when we have these trusts that accrue money into them from the sale of bonds, that these trusts accrue interest, and that interest is used on an annual basis, if, if so deemed by the administration and by the council, to offset these costs. But the purpose of having perpetual care trust is as a trust that accrues interest that can be used to address these. So I will also address those two questions, but so just that.
If I could, just, just to counter on that. I understand what the perpetual care fund is for. And we maintain, I believe, Mr. Murphy said six cemeteries. What I'm saying is that even though we have the money, we're not maintaining them. Some of them are in, you know, desperate need of attention. And as far as the, the premium bonds money, I do understand that, too, but it still comes back. It still comes back to, you spend a lot of money, and you get a lot of money in an account. And what's interesting about this account, and I just encourage my city councilors to take a look at it, it's just amazing what we've spent it on. I mean, we've even spent it on projects that we don't own land for. So it's questionable. This little cash, pot of cash is so great, and the taxpayers would love to see it, how we're spending money. I'll be happy to have you back, so you can go through each line item for me. Thank you very much.
Yep. Councilor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. And my apologies, I missed the last meeting. I was stranded in a warm place, but I'm here tonight. First, Dave, and, and Joe, thanks for the, the presentation. Getting a look at this over the course of the last few weeks, I can see the work and that you folks have done to reduce the scope. Some of them, yeah, I'm not in agreement with, with the reductions. I, I think that Pine Hills needs its facelift. It needs to become a cemetery. We talk about everyone taking a ride in there and looking at it. Sometimes people don't know it even exists over there. You just got the, the back gate and the front gate, and you really don't know it's there. So I'm in full support. I, I know the numbers, you know, we'd want it for nothing. We'd like to see Seaton, you know, do it for much less. But I look at those other numbers that are staggering, and I know that you folks don't take the first, yeah, that's, that's great. We'll take that number, and, and we won't question anything. I know you don't do that. I'd like to see that cemetery, and I know it's not going to be a Mount Wallaston or a Forest Hills, but become a cemetery in regards to character. And I think a lot of things that you have in the plan fits that way. I, I love the granite curbing over in Mount Wallaston. I love to see the granite curbing over in Pine Hills. But i- i- if you're looking at some of the highlights to reduce things, I, I can see that coming out. And I can see you also changing a few things over there. But the one thing I don't want is sometimes when you do that, at the end of the day, when the, when the project's done, you, you kind of regret, you, you, you cut it here and cut it there to save some money. It's not the character and the, the layout that people want to see. I think that that cemetery is way overdue. I know we've been battling for years to get the, the land, which is, which is done, and, and get the work done over there. But I, you know, maybe there can be a few dollars taken off, but I think you've done a tremendous job to get this going. It's way overdue. It's, it's what we need right now. And I think that if you're going to do it, you do it the right way. Because if you do it the wrong way, you're not going to probably go back here for a long, long time. So I think you've done a great job, Commissioner, and, and Joe, and Mr. Salvucci, who's not here tonight, on, on laying this out and answering a lot of the councilors' questions and coming back with some savings. And maybe we can get a, a few more savings, but I'm content at supporting what's in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Next, Councilor Yang.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening. So I have a few questions. I first off just want to just echo Councilor McCarthy's sentiments, in that I do appreciate that it looks like he went through with a fine tooth comb and cut back quite a bit in savings and outlined that for us. So I do appreciate always going back and taking multiple looks at something, right? Making sure that even throughout the course of a project, you're doing everything you can to find savings, you know, anywhere you can, right? Looking under the couch cushions for pennies. But I also do appreciate Councilor Mahoney's sentiments, in that some of these breakdowns, like, for example, I do appreciate in the packet that was sent over, the breakdown of the trees and the cost per tree, and how many trees and the types of trees. I mean, like, those are the details that I look for, right? I think all of you know that I'm a stickler for that kind of stuff, and finding like, okay, like, how much does a clock cost, and how many of them do you need, or like a microwave, right? We've had those kinds of conversations. So I appreciate, in the greenery aspect of that, you did that breakdown. But for the rest of the project, I didn't see that. So that is, is sort of where I'm coming into this conversation today, right? I would have loved to have seen that level of detail for the entirety of the project, because you all see that. Day to day, you see it when you're working out the bid with the different contractors that you have in front of us, but we don't see those information, those pieces of information. So this goes back to the beginning of the conversation I had with you on this, where we don't know what we don't know. So just always assume we're working from a place where we don't know anything about this. And again, you see this day in and day out, right? So it's almost like second nature to you to know these numbers off the top of your head, how you got to these numbers. But we don't, and so this is an opportunity for us to follow along that track. So to that end, I'm curious to see, when you had this project budget breakout, you said in the notes here that there's a 10% contingency built into the construction bid and the construction estimate, both for the cemetery grounds phase as well as the welcome center. But again, you know, the, the part here that says construction admin and resident project representative for the cemetery phase piece, it's 740,000, but the same line item is budgeted at 95,000 for the welcome center. So could you explain what a construction admin and resident project representative is, and how you came to the cost for those?
Yeah, I can, I can answer the direct question. It's that the two separate bid projects, so the earthwork, if you will, through Naughton is one separate project. The building construction for the welcome center will be a completely separate project.
But it's the same contractor we're using for both, or no?
No.
And they provided different estimates for what they would charge for a construction admin?
That is correct. The, the, and the earthwork or the expansion project by Seaton is an, is an engineering project and has an engineering oversight line item, $740,000. It's on slide 10 tonight. The specific building you're asking about would actually be bid out through a separate bid structure in Massachusetts for building contractors, not earthwork contractors, and overseen by an architect.
What's the, so what, what does a 740 cover exactly?
The 740 covers the, an onsite representative, full time, being the city's agent to oversee the contractor's activities, to log items that need to be paid on a unit price basis, such that the, the city has a representative who's basically managing the money on an hour by hour basis. It also entails the review of submittals for quality and conformance with the specifications. So there's not only a lot of earthwork in these projects, there's also a lot of paperwork in these projects. And the, the construction phase services for the expansion being 740,000 includes the office engineering associated with reviewing the submittal, the contractor's submittal, if the contractor proposes alternatives or alternates, reviewing the monthly payment requisitions, having meetings every week with the contractor. It's the, it's, it's the overhead component of executing a project of this magnitude.
Okay, and this is over the cost of the entirety, I'm sorry, over the course of the entirety of the project? So it says here in the timeline that was given to us that the project, it should be completed in 2024. So the 740 covers two years essentially of this one staff person and, and the work that they're going to be assigned.
And the office staff person, yes. And also, there are, there are specialists who will come in throughout the course of the project. For example, if you're burying underground electrical, an electrical engineer would make a visit for the inspection. That's a one-time example, but they would offer the person who is there 40 hours a week overseeing construction.
Okay. So again, it would be helpful to have had that at a time, just so we could look at it. But I appreciate you breaking that down. The other staff question that I have is that in the, in the answers that you detailed to us, Commissioner, you had said that there is going to be an anticipated staff person added once the project is complete. So we're looking at 2024, we'll see this additional staff person requested, but it'll be for fiscal year '25. So what is this additional staff person, and what are you anticipating the salary will look like, their responsibilities? Because, you know, if we're going to move forward to this project, then it, it makes sense that, then at that point, you say, okay. But you're also saying yes to this additional staff person, right, realistically? So could you give me some information about what you anticipate for this additional staff person?
So we anticipate that adding seven acres of land that has to be mowed and trimmed is going to require an additional, what we refer to as a labor gardener position. Their approximate salary now is about $45,000 a year. If projected out a couple of years, it might be $46,000, $47,000 for that particular position. Now, what we don't know, Councilor, which will be very interesting, is we've never done the pre-buried vaults before. Our staff spends a considerable amount of time digging and opening graves. There'll be some substantial efficiencies realized by pre-installing those vaults. So the reason why I'm not 100% committed to suggesting that this will be an addition position position, and we're certain of it because we're adding seven acres, is we'd like to see what type of efficiency offset we have in not having to dig full-depth graves anymore with the pre-installed vaults. So my anticipation is that we'll have to add a position, but it may be that we don't because of the efficiencies of the pre-installed vaults.
Logistically, so if you're adding an additional labor person for this project, could the revenues, and this might be an error question, could the revenues that you're anticipating from this cover that additional staff person so you don't have to propose it in the budget to us moving forward?
It depends on how the city manages. I mean, this would be a number of years out, so it depends on how the city manages the perpetual care fund as well, too. So could that happen?
But I'm just meaning like, you know, dollar-wise, right? Like, the math could add up where the revenues from this project could then, like, you know, just numbers-wise can cover it. But I'm saying like, logistically, when it comes to bringing on a staff person in the department, legally, is that something that we could do, right? Project out to say, okay, we're going to take the revenues from this and we can actually use that to cover a staff person? Do you get what I'm asking here? Like, I know there are some things legally we can and can't do, right, as municipalities? So I'm wondering if that's...
Certain funds they can't use for labor costs, so I don't want to...
Right, that's what I'm wondering. So we don't know, or you can do that or you can't?
Perpetual care, I don't believe we can use for labor costs.
Okay, so revenues, we wouldn't be able to use that to offset the additional person? Okay. Okay, well, so again, I just, I think that I do appreciate, again, the specifics on some of these things. I would have liked specifics on the entirety of the project and because we don't have that specifically for the welcome center building, what I would feel comfortable tonight, if it is going to move forward with the vote, even if it's not frankly until we see those numbers, where it stands right now, I would be comfortable moving forward with where you are on the grounds expansion and the actual bulk of this project itself because, you know, I do feel comfortable, you know, having you come back to us now, even having gone through with a fine-tooth comb. Like, I feel confident that you have looked through that bulk of the project, the portion of the project, to find out how you can come in as low as possible. But I don't feel that way with the welcome center. And so I, Mr. Chairman, would like to propose a cut of the $1.1 million to the welcome center, including the $95,000 for the construction aspect of that, just so that they can get moving on the bulk of the project, which is a cemetery grounds expansion, but then come back with some more specifics and detail for the welcome center itself. So that's the 1.1 plus the $95,000. But additionally, you know, we do have an explanation here that there is a 10% contingency already built into the cemetery grounds expansion, so the additional 520 contingency is not something that I feel that we need. So in total, with those cuts, I'd like to propose a cut for, let me see here, 1.965.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? We have a second. Okay, I guess we don't need one, but we do have a second. Okay, discussion on the motion. Counselor Kane.
Yeah, just a quick question. If you're to come back with new numbers for this portion of the proposed cut, what's that due to the bond request? Are you going to have to issue a separate bond for this?
Correct, Counselor.
Okay. What would be the cost associated with the second issuance of a 1.5, $1.6 million bond?
The difference would really be in Fed action on the other side of the summer session. They're looking at about a 50 basis point bump, give or take. That's maybe $50,000, $100,000 depending on the term of the note.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It could be about $50,000, $200,000 based on the term of the bond.
Okay.
You need to crunch the numbers on it, but that's a good rule of thumb.
Okay. And, but, I mean, the intent would be to come back to request this if it were cut today. So it just, it would potentially cost us more just down the line anyway if we're cutting this, is the point that I'm trying to get at, if they're going to come back anyway. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor DeMona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just listening to, I mean, I know we're on the motion here with the cut. One of the biggest things I asked Commissioner Murphy when we first came in front of the council is, I hope you can't come back for more funding. And he says, we're going to come in with a package and do it for that amount. You know, some of the modifications that they've made, $2.5 million, they've tightened up some areas, talking about needs and wants, I think things that need to be there and there's some things at wants. I totally agree with Counselor Kane. We had this situation with the animal shelter, which hasn't come out again. These costs are going to go up every day, we set on them. Do I think the welcome center needs to be that particularly funded and that big? No. But I do not want to see us come back here for something that we thought we were going to make savings with actually be more. And then a lot of the times, the public goes, well, you already voted on that and you're voting on it again and why didn't you just do it on the first run? And, you know, sometimes the folks on the outside, they only see, only pay attention to the headlines, sometimes they don't read the fine print. So, you know, I just, I think maybe we should consider maybe doing it the correct time the first time and taking a risk coming back for the proposed cut that we make and it being higher doesn't seem feasible, like, doesn't seem economical for us, for me at least. That's just, I don't know where I'm at with this cut. I don't know where I'm at with the whole proposal yet, but I'd like to, it's just what I feel right now. I'd like to hear from the other councilors and their particular sentiments, I guess, on this particular cut. But this is something that's very much needed for the city, this cemetery. We, it's much needed. We've been back at the apple now here twice. We've talked about it for a few years and here it is in front of us. I just don't feel like we're going to be, some of the folks out there and the public don't, you already voted on it, now you're coming back again. What's going on? Why is this? And they don't fully understand. So I'll see what the other councilors have to say and I'll figure out what we're going to do on this one. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Counselor Mahoney on the motion.
Although I appreciate the dialogue of if we were to take that cut, or as Counselor Yang had suggested, what I would hope, and I would hope everybody on this council would recognize that the amount of money that we're spending on that building needs to be addressed and it needs to be, it needs to come, not only is it too expensive, it's the ugliest building I've ever seen, so, and it's next to an even uglier building. So we have two problems. So you want to say yes to this? I just want to remind everybody that while you're worried about a bond that you might have to come back and discuss, that you want to do it all in one swoop, that the taxpayers of the city of Quincy do ask you to actually look at what we're doing to make sure that we're protecting them. And in this particular case, this building is costing, you know, $1,500 per square foot and that's just astronomical, you know? The downtown buildings probably didn't cost that much. So here's the thing, this is a welcoming center with two rooms and a bathroom, a half-bath. That's it. And you're not actually even addressing the eyesore that's next to it. So I appreciate the cut and I would happily see you come back and I would hope when you come back that your construction costs would be much less than a million one for that and it would definitely be able to absorb potentially the changes in the market because that number has to change. I wouldn't like to see you come back with anything less, anything more than a half a million dollars on that, which would definitely, definitely make up the difference in the bond because that's robbery, what you're doing to the taxpayers right there. It's embarrassing that you would even think to approve this package with this amount for a building that's 17 feet wide and, I don't want to be wrong about this, 17 feet wide and I think it's 39, 34, 34 feet wide and 17 feet wide. My guess is probably your downstairs of your home is bigger than that. That's embarrassing. I can't even believe that you brought it forward and that you, Commissioner, said you thought it was astronomical too and that you still allowed it to come forward. And it's ugly on top of everything else. So I appreciate the cut. I hope people will approve and go along with that. We shouldn't even be discussing this. And I still disagree that $14 million is still too much for this. We don't need, I mean, I'll be happy to cut it, I know people won't agree with me. I don't think we need the water features. I think that some of the things that we don't, it's, I wish people would actually spend some time and just go around and look at what other people have in other towns and realize that we don't have to have these astronomical numbers to have these things, that we can have nice things and we don't have to break the bank to do it, but we're more than willing to do it every single time this administration asks. And nobody seems to think that it's a responsibility of us to actually watch out for the taxpayers, but when it comes to election time, you always tell them that you are. So thank you very much.
Counselor Yang.
Thanks. I like to speak in I-statements, so I'm just going to start from there. I appreciate the dialogue that's happening tonight. I appreciate the sentiments folks have. I appreciate where Counselor Kane's coming from. We disagree, but I respect where you're coming from, right? Like, that's, this is a finance committee meeting, so I'm here to talk about finances, right? I mean, I've never designed a building outside like that before. I've designed the inside of a restaurant. You all know it, I talk about it a lot. So I'm not here to tell you how to design a welcome center. Let me just clarify, the thought process behind this cut isn't the design of a building. That's your, I trust you all to do the job you're doing, right? That's, I can't sit here, I'm not in your specialty, so I can't sit up here and say, cut the welcome center because it's not designed to the, you know, the prettiness that I want to see. I have no idea, right? I come from this place of finances and I want to see a breakdown. So I hope you all understand, right, and my fellow colleagues as well, that that's entirely where my approach is coming from tonight. I would have loved to see a financial breakdown that details how you got to that number. And if it makes sense, and it makes sense for what we're looking at with the costs today to do so, great, let's move forward, right? This is a finance committee meeting, let's have conversations about finances. I just want to clarify where I'm coming from with that cut. It has, again, nothing to do with me questioning your abilities here tonight. You're doing the job that you're doing. You came back already with significant cuts. I think that, you know, even more time that comes in might allow for more cuts. If they don't, then that's a mistake that I need to own, right? But at the end of the day, I trust the job that you're doing, I trust what you presented to us. I would like some more information moving forward, but at the end of the day, that's where this comes from. I would hope that you all, again, just understand my line of reasoning with that and that my fellow colleagues understand that as well. It's nothing to do with me challenging you on the way it looks. I'm here in a finance committee to talk about finances, so I just, I felt the need to say that. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to take, Chair, we'll take a point of privilege to speak on this, I haven't spoken on it. Through you, Mr. Murphy, on the welcome center, is there a reason for the cost? Is there something particular about the land or something?
I want to talk to the details, Mr. Sheehan. You know, understanding this discussion was inevitable, we tried to build a relatively modest building, but one that would be appropriate for the entrance to a cemetery. So we're trying to strike a balance between an appropriate entranceway and reasonable cost. So I can talk to, Mr. Sheehan can talk to the actual designer of the building and you'll see that, you know, there's nothing fancy about it.
Yes, again, Joseph Sheehan with Granite City. I will open the discussion by saying I'm not the architect. EBI is the architect, however, in your package from April 21st, Page 15 and 16, is a breakdown of the individual components of the building, the shell, the substructure, the exterior enclosures, the interiors, that speaks to what the partitions and the finishes are, the mechanical, electrical components, the ancillary components, and then your typical building costs of general requirements and fees. What we've been seeing is that smaller buildings that don't have an economy of scale do have a much larger foot, cost per square foot. This is a very durable masonry building. It's not made out of lightweight construction materials. It represents some of the things that the cemetery stands for with the construction materials of yesteryear, the bricks, the granite, some of the materials that continue to stay within the motif of the harmony and harmony of the way the cemetery has been built and will continue to be built. But yes, I agree that the bid costs and the costs that exist right now in the public bid market environment are very expensive. To Counselor Yang's point, we certainly can, if the motion passes and we get actual bids in hand, we will have contractor breakdowns, very similar to what we used in the value engineering exercise over the past month, and we can provide those pieces of information.
These are standard prices that, I know when I've worked on building projects, we go out, the architect puts together and he takes off a standard list of what things cost at that point. So basically, when you put this package together, you go through and do all that and that's what the prices are coming back at.
Correct, because this price is a budget price for appropriation, right? It would then be rectified with an actual bid price.
When the bid comes in. But you've taken this from actual costs and actual things.
Yes.
When I've worked on other buildings, Quincy High, different buildings, all of these things have been taken into consideration. So this is the number that has come back.
For budgeting, yes. You know, the architect keeps a cost catalog of square foot costs for roof, square, number of windows, number of doors. That's the methodology used for budgeting that you'll see on Page 15 and 16 in the packet.
Okay, so that's what we've already had on that. So basically, we're looking at a price that is what the price is to construct this and we're constructing in an area. I feel that, I feel there's a real need for this. I've listened to my, talked with a lot of constituents on it. People, I'm in the business where people want to get buried and they want to be buried in their own, their own city of Quincy. And I think this is something we need to, so I will be voting against the amendment. Next, Counselor Kane, did you wish to?
Yeah, I was just going to, you know, for efficiency's sake and for the details that some of my colleagues are looking for and to save us all time, is there any way that you could procure more information that might satisfy the requirements and requests of my colleagues? You know, I think it would, it would just save some time and effort and we wouldn't have to go through this back and forth and performative stuff.
As it relates to the actual breakdown of the costs of the welcome center?
Yes.
I don't think we have that available today, right? We have to get the architects to provide.
That's a very fair question. Today, the information we have is from the packet, it looks what's...
What you just said in 15, Page 15 or so?
Right, Page 15 and Page 16. It's what totals the $912,000 for the building. Then there's an additional contingency on there because of where we stand of $188,000, call it 20%, but that's a great example of illustrating why we're working with budget numbers for an appropriation that would all be rectified with the actual bids.
Okay.
When they come in hand.
All right. Because, you know, I'm with my colleague, the chairman here, and I also hear my colleagues on my right. And so it would be nice to come to a civil agreement where people can be satisfied with the information presented because, you know, I don't think it's as dramatic as, we're, you know, stupid here and we're making poor decisions on behalf of our constituents, which is inappropriate, I think, to call out. So I appreciate that. If there is anything more, you know, I think it would be appreciated. I understand that this is what it is, but in order to satisfy, I think, a couple of people here and to make things a little bit more apparent to others on the outside who might not have access to similar information, just maybe something to think about again in the future. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Harris.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Now that the, I'm the last person to speak, correct? Wow, I'm loud. Right, on the motion, as far as the motion, and then when we come back.
And then we come back if you want to.
Yeah, absolutely, because I waited to, thank you very much. I'd like to, I'd like to have a vote take place on this. I'm comfortable with the information. As you know, I, at the meeting, I made sure that I withdrew my motion and to give what just took place tonight to take place. And my real concern, and it's a big concern, I know folks who have been in these projects right now during, especially during COVID, but the whole new gas, gasoline situation that's going on, the prices of everything is going through the roof. I have folks that, right in my neighborhood in Squanum, projects to redo their house, to drink, make the house that they wanted, and guess what? They got caught in the middle of the price of stock going up and unfortunately, it's not the stocks that are going up right now, it's stock of building materials. So I'd like to move, that the motion be moved.
You wishing to move the question?
Yes.
Motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second? We don't need a second, we're in committee. So motion, the vote now is going to be a motion to move the question. So can a clerk read the roll?
The amount.
The exact amount.
Yes. So I could just say that Counselor Yang said 1.9. What do we have for?
1.965.
1.965.
1.965, that's more than the, 1.965 is the amount?
No, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. 1,195,000.
Okay.
1,965,000.
900.
See?
1,965,000.
1,95.
1,965.
65, okay.
Okay.
I don't know. 00. Okay.
All right, if that's the amount, let's vote.
Okay.
So on the cut.
On the cut.
Counselor Kane.
No.
Counselor DeBona.
No.
Counselor Harris.
No.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
No.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes. No, no, I'm sorry, I'm not, no.
No, motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay, now we're going to go back to, to on the regular, on the regular item before us. And at this point, Counselor Harris, who hasn't spoken, will speak on the main motion.
Thank you, and I believe I was the last at the end for this, for this, hopefully. You know what, I have a whole bunch of notes that I scribbled, that's the Bill Harris notes, but a couple of things that really, really stuck out to me was the, that was in the presentation was the veterans section enhancing, enhancement. I know that we just, when we talk about different places that are family and, and hopefully not too soon, some of us be laid to rest, I think about some of the cemeteries, the old ones that my, my, my family is in. I think this is such a great project. I said it before, I've had folks that have asked me about, who have asked me about places for their family to be laid to rest, and, and I really didn't have much, there wasn't much to go on, especially with, you know, there's, it's a tight spot at, right there at Mount, at the Mount Wallaston, and so, and you know what? Something that really, really sticks out, somebody said to me, do it right. You do it right, I think this is being done right, and this is one of the project that is really, really important, and I'm going to make a motion for a positive recommendation.
Motion has been made for a positive recommendation. On the motion. Okay, seeing none, clerk, oh, I'm sorry, President DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say the cutting of the 2.5 million in there and trying to make the best you possibly can to make the modifications is really, really what's getting my vote tonight, because you guys have really tightened up some of the particular areas here. You know, this is a much-needed project that we need in the city. I hope that other presentations that come forward, maybe other departments, other bonding issues, come in with an approach that you guys did, your team, both natural resources and the engineering part of this, and coming in with modifications and helping out some of the areas that aren't particularly needed, more of the wants. You tightened up the bolts in here. It's very important that we did this. I know that you got the estimates that were very high, some, somebody went over $10 million. I mean, these prices are going to go up. And we wait another couple, few months, we're not going to get the project underway in the summer, whether the case may be in the next, the weather's getting better, we get able to get the bite of the apple now. And I think some of the stuff that was discussed tonight is a better look at how the city council is going to, going to handle some of these other issues and some of these other estimates, I guess I could say. So with that, Mr. Chairman, let's, let's vote. Thank you.
On the motion, Counselor Mahoney.
If you don't mind, thank you very much. So I just have to explain that I do think this is a need. It's a need for the city, it's a need for the city residents. I find it just, just, and I'm speaking in eyes right now, I find it outrageous that the cuts that were brought in, that the final number is exactly the number that we had before we had the cuts. It's not coincidental. It's, the bid happened before we had the vote. We typically have a vote before we go out to bid, that's fine. These are all the things that are questionable in the way we do these things. And, you know, if you wanted to, it's just, the number's the same, 16.4, 16.4, we're happy with the cuts. I think we're, you know, we're taking advantage of the taxpayers, and they need, in this economy, when we talk about the economy going up and people not being able to afford gas or do certain things, I want you to remember that we're making, we're saying yes to this. And, you know, in S and P, it pretty much said, you know, with the pension obligation bond, we have to be careful about how much we're doing in the city of Quincy. And yes, we have excess levy, but that means we're going back to tax people if we're not careful. And I think we have to be honest about what we're doing up here, and I'm going to be honest, I can't support this because I just think it's, it's too much, and it's too much to put on the burden, even though you say it's going to be paid for by itself. So many things we say about that in the city of Quincy, and it doesn't always happen that way. So I can't support this, although I support the idea of it, I can't support this budget, this bond as it is tonight. Thank you.
Okay, any other counselors? I'm just going to take a moment of privilege, as the chairman. I'm convinced, having looked at the numbers, talked with Mr. Mason, talked with Mr. Murphy, that they have a way to pay for this. And it's obviously that they've gone back, done a lot of engineering, and come back with what I see as a good project, and is, is actually a real need for the city, an extreme need. And I see it every week. My family runs a business that deals with people all the time, and they want to be buried in Quincy, and they want to be buried here. And most of the time, you have to tell them, you have to wait till you pass away, we can get you a grave, because it's only done at need right now. And I think this is something that needs to be fixed up, that needs to be addressed, and I'm confident in the vote, so I will be voting in the affirmative. With no one else, clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Andronico. Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
No.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Five, Mr. Passes.
Okay, and I remind all the counselors that this is a committee vote, and it will be, we'll be bringing it out at the next council meeting, so I think if there is some